Nobody does it better. Makes me feel sad for the rest.
And I did a test.
Probably got a better end with that.
All right, we are gonna call the meeting to order at 7:01. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will do Lucas Heard.
Here.
Jeff Klein.
Here.
Sean Morrison.
Here.
Caleb Poisson is absent. George Pushes.
Here.
Megan Smain-Cooch is here, and Dave Witt is here.
Yes.
We will, oh, yes, we will have our first call to the public. We do not have microphones in here, so if you can...
I'll do my best. Sarah Porter, Silver Road. As a resident that has been doing my best to learn and understand this process, I find myself before you today disappointed with the current provided ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to regulate solar energy systems. In my process evaluating this ordinance, I have reviewed the original ordinance, the original proposed amendments, this proposed amendment, along with ten other ordinances written by Mr. Homier. And to the agitation of many, attended and participated in countless township meetings outside of Conway. While I understand and appreciate that less can be more, this ordinance is lacking specific language found in other ordinances that I feel is important. These proposed amendments with setbacks that went from 1,000 feet to 250 feet make it clear that some of the very basic safeguards this community requested were not considered. Handy Township's ordinance has setbacks of 500 feet, and the county planning commissioners noted the ordinance as very well thought out, one of the best sets of amendments regarding solar that the commission has seen so far, and also stated the solar amendments to the Handy Township ordinance are well-written and serve to strengthen the ordinance standards by private and commercial solar energy systems. I'm extremely uneasy not listing specific safeguards in the actual ordinance as opposed to the general specific permit requirements. Relying on the special use requirements will mean relying on a township official to do their job at the time of application. If it is determined to not be very important to that individual doing that job, and it's not spelled out in the ordinance, this could lead the community with a 30-year project that has negative impacts to everyone. The project in Lennon is a notable example of this. Will our zoning administrator have the time to consistently monitor these projects and follow through on violations? Additionally, another example is the DTE weather station panels that were put up on Killinger Road. We were told by our township officials that they were told they will not be removing them anytime soon, and that we could sue them. What does this tell us about the companies we are about to do business with, not to mention the deep pockets we are up against? While there are sections of this ordinance that have been added and I feel do portray and attempt to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of the community, there are areas of concern that need to be more detailed and specific language additions. Some of the other townships I have referenced do not have ordinances that are any longer than ours, they are just more detailed in the language used. While this may be on the advice of council, I am wondering if we as a community will get an opportunity such as other townships have had to provide feedback for inclusion. I have included a list of 21 sections that I feel are concerned, and noted the ordinance that they were found in with all the sections for reference. I'm not gonna read them because I don't have time. I have included the copies of the ordinances referenced above that our attorney has assisted in preparing. We do not know what the future holds for these projects or the developers' business plans. Our ordinance need to at least have the basic categories addressed to protect us in the event future projects are adapted to meet the state's set initiatives. I am in no way suggesting we draft a book regarding solar scale utility, utility solar scale, excuse me. But as you can see from the ordinance provided, we have examples in front of us of similar ordinances with additional language that will better serve to protect this community. Therefore, I'm asking the board to review the list of concerns and the ordinances provided to amend the ordinance with the additional language needed to protect the health, safety, and general welfare of Conway Township. I'm asking that you put this in the minutes for today.
Am I clear? All right.
You may have to project just a little bit more, just in case.
Sure will. I want to second what Sarah said. She obviously put great thought, a lot of time and energy into reviewing this. I feel the proposed ordinance is very weak in many areas. There's a lot of holes in it. I second what she said. It's hard for us to judge anything right now because we don't know where the overlay district is. Has that been decided, or is that something in the future?
I will share that Mr. Homier does have a recommendation.
Okay, all right. So it's hard to say much before we see that. I was, I'll mention just a few things. I was surprised that the setback was changed from 1,000 feet to 250 feet in that from residences, in that from vacant land it's only 100 feet. I would like to remind everybody that when we, the Solar Advisory Committee took people's input, the owners of vacant land were just as adamant about having a substantial setback as people with residences. I'm talking about people with forest land, farmland, hunting property, et cetera. 100 feet is not acceptable. I was also surprised that the battery, we had a prohibitance of batteries. That has been removed from the ordinance. There's just a lot of holes in it. We'll talk more once we know where the overlay district is. But I share Sarah's concern, we need to think for the future, not just right now on this. And this ordinance does not do it. Thank you.
Chip Janamaller, right on Chase Lake Road in Conway Township. I just had a few specific comments about the ordinance. It's all what Steve already mentioned, like there's no language in there about battery storage. On page 10, sections 9A, 9B, 9C, and 9D, I would suggest a statement in there that the applicant is paying for all of those analyses. On page 11, 4C and D, I'd like to see an increase in all of the setbacks listed, as Steve mentioned. 1,000 feet would be great. The screening language, I think, could be worked out a little bit. Some of the screening language I've seen in other ordinances, it's two staggered rows of screening. If you look at the screening, I've seen pictures from the Linden area, it's one row. There are provide these that are 15 feet apart from each other, there's virtually no screening whatsoever. And then the no battery storage outside. Thank you.
Jason Stones, Harrington Road. To go back to the setbacks, I do believe that the Township Board, which supersedes this board, already fixed that a couple months ago by Mr. Pushes submitted ordinance to put it back to 1,000 feet, so why are we gonna go back to 250 or 100 feet? I could be mistaken, but pretty sure that that was already passed by the actual board. The green belt deal, like you were saying before, says four trees every 100 feet, or four trees within every 100 feet, that's 25 feet apart. And if you see some of these other solar places, they put a tree that's about this big around, that you've got 25 feet in between. What's that gonna do? Even if it does grow 15 feet tall, like you say in here, it's still only this big around. And then the, it talks about the map, but of course there's no map in there, so that's my other concern, like where's the map? Thank you.
Mike Brown, Silver Road, Conway. I'm gonna get a little more specific of some of the items that I feel need addressed. Page eight, item J, decommissioning. The last words of the statement are to restore the subject parcels. My question is, restore them back to what? To homeowners, okay? To the townships, okay? I think that needs to be like a specific thing, what we are restoring these back to, not just restoring them. Item I, this is a plan for resolving complaints. Well, as somebody already spoke about the test panel down there and stuff, and we've already gave them fines and things like that, so I think that that has to have a specific thing of how stringent the fine is gonna be, and actions that will be taken step by step to make sure that it is followed, all the way to lawsuit, or whatever the end result has to be. I think there should be a specific amount of fine for each one, and it should step up in amount on something like that. There are also, page nine, says a plan for managing hazardous waste. Page 10, it says a plan for land clearing, a plan for ground cover establishment. So it's just a plan. I think it should say in there a plan that the township accepts, not just a plan. Again, it's open to interpretation. Page 11, item C, is the back set, or setbacks of the 250 feet where it says is occupied residential structure. So if it's not a residential structure, it goes down to the 100 feet, and only 100 feet from lot lines and public right of ways. So I think that, like everybody else has said, needs to be addressed a way better back set of things like that. The other one was also, page 12, item A, with the landscape or tree setting. And then we go down to item D, it says that you can refer back to standards in section 6.16 of the zoning ordinance. Well, I'm not sure if you read item 6.16 of the standard zoning ordinance, but they can put six inches of limestone down, or they could use six inches of some wood chips. That's what this says in this 6.16. You might wanna read all that, because there's lots of outs in there. Page 14, item 15, there's only one sign that they have to put on site for an emergency, one. So if this balloons up somehow and becomes, you know, 1,500 acres like they're reasonably wanted, then they only need one sign on the entire thing for an emergency number. Page 14, item 18, is the security bond of 125% of the estimated cost of decommission. I'm sure y'all know what security bonds are worth if they go bankrupt, which is zero. At Marion, they adopted a 100% cash upfront from the developer, not a security bond, cash.
Amen.
Amen.
Other items in here that, like, in my opinion, need some major looking at and tweaking of this ordinance for it to be sufficient for me, living in this township. Thank you.
Hello. May I tell you that Gannon Road, Caxton Township, I'm here partially to support and also because the front part of my parcel is going to be a disaster if the drainage issue happens from the big proposed project at this time. The Gannon Byron Road area, apparently there was a study previously done, I believe the end of last year, and bingo, myself and my neighbors are right there. So the few things that have come up, I definitely agree with the setbacks. And the 100 foot, it's certainly not fair to anybody, regardless if they're using land for pasture. Somebody might want to build a home on their property, and, I just can't ever talk here. 50 feet from wetlands. I'm really, really into that end of the spectrum, and I know it's low value to a lot of people. But if the wetlands and shorelines, et cetera, are supposed to be used by wildlife, 50 feet is a joke, with all due respect, it just is not gonna work. The stormwater study, hopefully, would help to relieve any additional strain. The noise issue, you have two different numbers listed, the 7 a.m. to 9 p.m., 9 p.m. to 7 a.m. People who are working shift work, law enforcement, health people, health industry people, you need to sleep during the day, too. And I just thought it was a little bit of a slap in the face, and this is like everywhere, it's not just here. But the noise situation should be fair for everybody. And ironically, you see tonight, the news right before I left, only 31% of people are getting the sleep that they need. And unfortunately, we are going into more and more of a health issue, in my opinion, with all of this. The fire suppression under 13, third-party independent inspection should be done, but approved by the township. In the past, some of us may be called the Agent Orange, which is still hunting people. The Mont Sanal Roundup, which was safe, is not safe, et cetera. The ground check for toxins should be done under the decommissioning number 17 prior to being filled. The way I read 17, the site would have been checked, but that would have been after the fill was done and it was restored. So I think before fill is put in, again, there should be a third-party independent company approved by the township. And the extraordinary events under 19, as just referenced, I think an additional fine in addition should be charged for them not waiting even 24 hours of issues, and maybe even more. Thank you, thanks for putting up with me and my poor speaking.
Hello. My name is Yvonne Blackman, I'm from Marion Township. I came here tonight because I'm kinda practicing, so I kinda wanna run it by you guys before I present it to my own board. So back in 2006, Michigan Legislature passed a zoning ordinance, you know, in the prohibiting establishment law. And so Michigan Supreme Court has, you know, like, of course, this law's been courted a few times, Michigan Supreme Court, the latest, I think, is 2016, for the demonstrated need. So this is the law for totally prohibiting the establishment of land used within the local unit of government in the presence of a demonstrated need. So the demonstrated need is the driver. This is, you know, supposedly pushing all of this demonstrated need. So Mr. Homier had stated, "In the first 18 minutes of our meeting, 11 times Marion Township has a demonstrated need." Well, I totally disagree with that. None of us have a demonstrated need in Livingston County. Because, number one, Michigan case law says a desire is not a demonstrated need. So there's a desire to bring solar. That is not a demonstrated need. A demonstrated need would be if DTE gave you guys notice that they were pulling out five years, and you guys were on your own, and you had a supply, like a school, okay, you have 300 capacity for 300, and all of a sudden you have like 400 students in your school. And then before you know it, you have 450, and then you project that you're gonna have 500 students in your school within two years. Now that's a demonstrated need to go to the community and say, "We all want a bond because we're maxed out, we're growing, and we have a demonstrated need." Okay, so there is no demonstrated need for electricity, not now, not in the near future, or not even in the long term. So this really isn't a demonstrated need issue, it's a desire issue. Okay, so then let's go to the Act of 2008, our law for 35% of the state's electric needs should be met by a combination of energy waste by 2025. So we know that it should be met, so this is what the law says. And actually, the law is specific to electric utilities' energy. The legislature in 2008 never meant for this law to be applied to farmland, ever. This is not part of the equation, it's utility energy, that's what it was designed for. So in the first 18 minutes, seven times, Mr. Homier, because it says should, okay, this says should, should be met. Mr. Homier stated required, mandated, must, need to, seven times. There is no requirement, there is no mandate, there is no must, there is no nothing in this law, nothing. So where does this outcome from? Low and behold, our governor, in 2019, the executive branch of government decided to violate their constitution of Michigan, change the law, by writing a policy statement? Well, the governor has no authority as the executive branch of government to change the Public Act 116, because that's what this did. This policy changed a law.
You're at three minutes.
Okay, thank you. So anyways, in closing, I would say that there is no demonstrated need, nothing can force you from putting this on hold for a year, two years, until you all figure it out, because Mr. Homier is giving you unlawful advice. And we're gonna have a talk with Mr. Homier's superiors. Thank you.
Steve Weiss, Silver Road. Some of the things I was gonna talk about, other people have already addressed, so I'm not gonna go back over that. But I feel that this ordinance amendment that you guys have come up with, or whoever came up with, is extremely weak, okay? It should be a lot more well-thought-out and address different topics which the Solar Advisory Committee has pored over with their time and their thoughts and their hearts, with due diligence, digging into these issues. Okay? I don't see anything in this about wind, which, as soon as we shut this down, or establish an area for solar, I mean, that's what's coming next, full-blown. So that needs to be taken into consideration.
Steve, this is just solar.
Okay. Thank you. I'll get off of that one. Now, I don't know, we went up, did a little road trip up to Lennon up there, and toured Ranger Power's installation, and I can tell you, I have worked on many solar fields, and that was the poorest installation I have ever seen in my entire career. And the concerns about flooding are very real, because we talked to many of the residents in that area, that their properties were so flooded, they tore up all the drain tiles, their propane tanks were practically floating. It took them almost a year to get that straightened out. When they say that they're not gonna damage the drain fields, I don't believe Ranger Power, anything that they say. And I don't know about the other contractors, but also, when windstorms kick up and they damage the solar panels, which happens, they have piles of them stuffed in the back corner up there, that we have witnesses of people that live there. So they're not mitigating the damage to the environment by leaving piles of junk panels out there. Page 11, section 4, again, you know, the setback, I really don't understand how we went from 1,000 feet to 250 feet, because that's what Ranger Power wanted. And I know that, okay? They came in here and said this and that, this is what we want to do our project, okay? And that's how you wrote it. Then the board, I'm beating a dead horse here, but the board said, "No, you're gonna reinstate that 1,000-foot setback." And here we are with 250 feet again, and 50 feet from wetlands. This is not acceptable, it's ridiculous, and as citizens, and a concerned citizen of this township, I don't agree with any of it.
Mine will be quick. They have stated that we have to have renewable energy, and we have to meet the mandates according to our state.
Real quick, what's your name?
Joanne Haas.
Good, thank you.
So we have to have renewable energy in here. There are multiple different renewable energies. There's wind, there's biomass, there's hydro. I believe that if you have made your choice, that you're going to use solar to fulfill your needs of renewable energy. And I believe we need to state and block every other renewable energy, because we've already fulfilled our obligation to renewable. So we shouldn't have to have a wind ordinance, we shouldn't have to have a biomass ordinance. We've already fulfilled our need by making the choice that you were gonna do it with solar. solar.
I live in Antrim Township. I've been keenly watching this township for a long time, and now I've become involved in watching other townships. And I've looked at probably 100 solar ordinances, if not more. And I've read this proposed ordinance, and although I speak, I think it speaks to many of the issues utility-scale solar power plants are responsible for creating in rural townships, I don't feel it adequately represents or addresses most of them. I don't see minimum or maximum acreage sizes or percentage of acreage used or proximity limits. I feel this proposed ordinance is purposely vague and therefore open to interpretation. I've seen several other townships in our area with much better solar zoning regulations. And at this point, I'm left wondering why we are no closer today to an ordinance that protects our residents in rural neighborhoods. I attended the Chestening Township Planning Commission meeting, as an aside, last week. I guess I've become an anti-utility-scale solar mercenary who works for free. I gave my prepared statement, and immediately after the meeting, I was rudely confronted by two representatives from DTE who said I was misrepresenting and mischaracterizing the facts as I saw them. And one of those statements that I made is, "You're a partner of Ranger Power." And they vehemently denied that, and I said, "No, you are. I have it in writing, I just don't have it with me." And they demanded to see the document, and I got home and I brought it right up. And they were hand-in-glove with Ranger Power, and we all know what the debacle looks like on M13. And I'm ashamed to admit, I'm from Chia Wasi County. When everybody goes there, that's my county, okay? That's what I have to look at. So I'm telling you guys, please get it right. Thank you.
I live on 920 Long Island County Township. I missed the first 10 minutes, so I apologize for that, but I didn't, this idea of a solar district overlay is not in the mix, is not in the packet. So I have no idea, is that my entire road? Is that all right in front of my house? Where is that? And so, you know, I'm reading through it, trying to make, trying to see where you guys are at and what's happening, and vague is exactly what it is. It's just like, well, we're going to have it seat here, and we don't know what that is. So I, very frustrating to try and be part of this decision with you guys and make decisions in elements that can help you make a better decision when you don't put all the information there. I don't like the setbacks. I think the setbacks are super small for what we were asking for and what we had decided on and what we kind of pushed to get back to the original moratorium. And the ground cover is definitely vague. A seven-foot tree 100 feet apart is like a single Christmas tree in a field. Like, that's it, that's covering it. Even if you stagger them, that's not, that's not even a Christmas farm, tree farm cover. So that's not going to work. And then it says that a representative has to be reportable to you once every three years if you have questions. So every three years for 30 years, you're going to load up your questions and ask because that seems like not even an annual review on what's going on. And so I find that you guys are like, "Okay, but we'll talk to you in three years, maybe we'll have issues and we'll bring it up then." So that just seems like, once we allow it, once we have it here, that the reporting back to the planning commission, which will be you guys, I assume, you know, that you, they will only have to report back every three years. And they're not listening to that little test panel? They don't care. They're going to leave it there, they're going to get fined 300 times. So why would we allow that review to be every three years? I don't, that doesn't make sense to me. So, thank you for your time.
My name is Scott Brown. I live at 900 Silver Road. I've been a firefighter in the state of Michigan for over 20 years. It's not a question of if these solar plants would catch fire, but instead it's a matter, it's a question of a matter of when. On a fire scene, there's three main priorities. Priority one is safety, priority two is fire extinguishment, priority three is property conservation. I'd like to address each of these real quickly. Let's start with life safety, priority one. When these solar plants catch fire, it'll be electrical and chemical fire will be treated as a large-scale hazardous material incident. The plastic, the glass, the batteries, and the electrical components of these solar plants will burn hot rapidly while releasing dangerous toxic fumes into the air. The responding fire brigade will be protected from these fumes due to the self-contained breathing apparatuses. Where is the protection for us as residents as these toxic fumes blow into our backyard and our homes with a proposed setback of only 250 feet to residential property? How is this safe for the residents of County Township? Furthermore, as these solar plants burn, the plastic, the glass, the batteries, and the electrical components will melt and enter the soil beneath the solar plants, which ultimately have adverse effects on our wells and drinking water. What immediate or prolonged health implications will this have on us residents, and how is this safe for the residents of County Township? Now regarding fire extinguishment, that's the problem I have with your proposed amendment. It says it'll have a suppression system that will immediately extinguish the fire. I will tell you, good luck with that because we can't even get immediate extinguishments on suppression systems that are located indoors. These are going to be outside, exposed to the weather, the elements, wind, freezing temperatures, what have you. That being said, on to priority three, property conservation. I've already said that these fires will burn hot and fast, they will destroy the vegetation within the solar plant fields. More importantly, with the proposed decreased property setbacks, there's a high likelihood that due to wind direction, blowing embers, radiant heat, these fires will spread onto adjoining properties, destroying farm fields, vegetation, wildlife, even our own personal property, such as our plants in our backyards, which also goes back to life safety issue. How is this safe for the residents of County Township? Further, oh, I'm going to need to read that part. So, back to property extinguishment, or fire extinguishment. What happens if those suppression systems fail or don't put the fire out? What's plan B? You get a call in the fire departments, and I could go on another three minutes about response time and whatnot as far as what it would take for them to get there. So for these reasons, it is in the best interest for all of us in County Township that these solar plants be placed in industrial and commercial zones that are closer to the responding fire departments with access to a municipal water supply and further away from the residential and air-cooled zones. Failure to do so would be irresponsible, neglectful, and most importantly, unsafe.
I need a motion to approve the Planning Commission meeting, March 13, 2023 agenda. I did note, however, I don't have a second call to the public. So we will do that as nine, and then 10 will be adjournment. Any other additions or corrections to the agenda?
No.
Hearing none? Can I get a motion?
I'll make that motion except the agenda as written with that.
Motion by Dave Witt, support by Lucas Curd, to approve the agenda for this evening including the small amendment. Any discussion? All who's in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Now we will go to the approval of the February 13, 2023 minutes. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none. I need a motion to approve.
I make a motion to approve the February 13 meeting minutes.
I will second that.
Motion by Lucas Curd, support by Sean Warson, to accept the February 13, 2023 minutes. Communications, the zoning administrators report.
We had one land use permit last month for a new house.
Thank you. B, the Livingston County Planning Commission update report. You'll note that I stuck in the packet the Article 6 General and Supplemental Regulations, Section 6, period 07, supplemental regulations pertaining to yards. They made one recommendation, this is regarding the swimming pools, but they did make one recommendation and then they cast it along. So at this point, it goes to the board. They're going to do their thing, and then the ordinance will be updated accordingly. Any questions with that or?
What was their recommendation?
They have, it's in the package.
It's not in my package.
It's not in the package?
It's bone temporary.
Seasonal swimming pools, spas, hot tubs, and similar structures that are intended to be temporary in nature, such as inflatable pools or of similar materials, which do not require permanent location, foundation, or other fixed position on the property as defined in Article 2, structures shall not be required to obtain a land use permit as required in Article 3, Section 3, Period 03, if the height of the temporary structure does not exceed 24 inches from grade level.
That was their recommendation.
That was their recommendation. So, but it's all in the board's hands, and if they want to kick it back to us, they can do that, but otherwise, if they approve it, then they're all set. Moving on to new business, we have the zoning ordinance amendment, and so just a little correction is that we have a number that needs to be added to it. It's 2023-02, and a review draft of the new Article 19 Solar Energy System District in replacement of existing 6.26 Solar Energy Systems. So the recommendation was to come up with what is called an overlay district, and in conversations, the goal of an overlay district in this particular instance is to find a location in proximity to transmission lines or substation. It reflects and answers demonstrated need. It keeps the agricultural aesthetic and then mitigates any adverse effects. So just to let everyone know, we are not voting on this. We are now, I guess, going back to the drawing table, and so we are reviewing what Attorney Homier has presented to us, and so we will discuss, we'll make amendments and changes as we go along. So with that, Michael, I'll turn it over to you, if you want to add.
Sure. So we put together a working draft, that's what we did, and then worked collaboratively, obviously, with the planning commission. There was some indication by the board, and still may be worthwhile, that once we got that draft, then the planning commission could have held a series of workshops either with the committee to, for input on that as well. So that's kind of the stage or the step that we're at. We've reworked it. I understand there are concerns with respect to some of the requirements, but nothing, when you work, when you start with a draft, then that's where those revisions occur. I will tell you that with respect to the setbacks, because that's a common theme, the setbacks will depend on the size of the overlay district as well. So if I told you that you had an overlay district of, I don't know, let's say 10 acres, 1,000 feet of setback, wouldn't make sense, right? You would have an overlay district that permitted a use that really didn't permit the use. So those are not set in stone, but they will be flexible depending upon what the planning commission believes may be the proper size of that overlay district and where it may be located. And that's a configuration that we really haven't gotten to yet. We're really starting with just the requirements of the zoning ordinance. There is another provision, and I know when we talk about how it's structured with respect to the requirements versus the approvals, all of the requirements are substantive things that an applicant would have to provide as part of the approval. And there's a provision in there that says just that, that all of these requirements that are listed either as part of the application, part of the special use, part of the site plan, are all substantive requirements. They're just not there as sort of, well, we provided a plan. That plan would have to be approved by the planning commission as part of that, but those plans, and specifically, Subparagraph 3 talks about information, plans, documents, and other items identified as application requirements in the ordinance, including site plan and special land use permit, are substantive requirements for obtaining approval. So they're just not put in there as elements to supply. They are actually substantive issues that would have to be provided and then reviewed and approved as part of that special land use permit process.
And then all that would come out in the planning process when we sit down and do a site plan review?
Yeah, and so typically, you know, site plan review doesn't require public notice, but because it's combined with a special use permit, it would require public notice as well. So the public would be notified when an application was submitted along with that special use permit process that then is all part of that review.
I think some of the concerns of the public, though, is due to lack of specifics within ordinance and using generalized language, it creates concern of the general public as they read the draft. They're looking for specifics. So are you basing that on a legal opinion of being reasonable or unreasonable if it was to be interpreted by a court?
No, I think that, you know, we can, certainly if the planning commission goes through the process, and again, this is just the first draft that the planning commission is looking at, but as you go through that process, and let's suppose you settle on an overlay district, full size and location, then it's easier to draft around those specifics because right now, it's sort of up in the air, right? So we just draft generally and say, "Okay, we're going to draft this for a, an overlay district. I don't know the size yet, so I don't know whether that 250-feet setback is appropriate, not appropriate." I think, once you get down to it, just having kind of worked at rough calculations, that that 250 feet, based on the size of that setback, is going to be substantial. But again, it depends on where that overlay district is located and how it's configured.
In addition, if some court deems the demonstrated need to be not applicable or unconstitutional, so to speak, does the rest of the ordinance stay in place, and does that rest of the ordinance have to be specific to eliminate that threat in the future?
So here's how, here's how the analysis works, right? You don't even get to demonstrate the need until and unless you've completely prohibited a lawful land use. So by its very nature, you are permitting it in an overlay district subject to application and site plan review, special use permit, okay? So I'm not even certain that you ever get to the demonstrated need portion, okay? But assume, as we have...
If I was to apply?
Yes.
Okay. You're saying I may not get that far? Is that what you're...
Correct. But assume, as we have drafted, that we are doing both. One is, we're saying, "Okay, you could have that use in this limited area, provided that you meet all of these requirements." That's the overlay, right? So we never get to demonstrate the need. If you meet all these requirements, you could do it there.
In that district.
By definition, not exclusion, right?
Do we need a definition of demonstrated need?
So the demonstrated need portion is interesting only in that you would have to... you would have to first find that you've either adopted or enforced an ordinance that has the effect of completely prohibiting a lawful land use where there's a demonstrated need in your community or the surrounding communities, okay? That's the law. So if I said, well, we've provided enough acreage in an overlay district for you to meet your average electrical demand of all of the premises in the township. Let's just assume we started that.
To be clear, we're only referring to the township inclusive, not exclusive.
Correct.
Okay.
And so let's suppose, you know, we calculated an electrical demand and we convert that then to panels on property given the restrictions, and it comes out to 20 acres with some element of growth, okay? So we'll call it 25. And you then designate a, an overlay district of 25 acres for that use. You have both, one, not excluded the use, you've prevented it, and two, you've met your demonstrated need. Under that scenario, I think you fulfill your requirements under the zoning enabling. The alternative, though, is also true, which is you can prohibit a land use, and there's a risk in that. The risk is, right, that some judge somewhere says, well, you've completely prohibited the use, there is a demonstrated need, and not only are we, now we're going to tell you where it can be located and under what conditions, because we'll just enjoin you from interfering with that development. Those are the risks. And so when we look at these things, we take into account that risk analysis and we try and balance the, sort of the, not excluding the use, because that gets you to the high risk, right? If you just said, and, you know, I could draft an amendment very simply that says, solar farms are not permitted here, period. But then you're going to have to defend that, right? So your risk goes up here. Would you be successful? Yeah, maybe, right? I'm not convinced there's a demonstrated need either. But we're trying to ratchet down the risk to allow the use under very limited circumstances, heavily regulated, and then avoid having an argument on that demonstrated need issue. But even if we did, we can then justify why we did what we did.
How long before we know where the overlay district is going to be located?
Well, that, I suppose, depends on our discussions. I would first recommend that we get through some of the substantive stuff, except for maybe setbacks, which will be directly correlated to the size of that. But some of the other stuff...
The size of the overlay district.
Correct. But some of the other stuff, I think, is legitimate, like the screening. If we need to bolster some of the screening requirements, that's easy enough done. It's not problematic at all. These are all sort of elements that the planning commission can say, yeah, we need more of this, no, we don't need that, yes, this, you know. So that's kind of where we're at.
But back in the previous draft, there was pushback by the planner regarding the screen. And that's where there were some issues about specific language, rows of trees, spacing, height, whatever. The species that be used, okay? And they kept it general, it wasn't specific. So I think the public is looking for specificity.
Yeah, and I'm, like I said, I'm fine with adding additional screening. The whole goal of screening is so you don't see it. Even like when you're selecting, say, the overlay district, and the chair referred to this earlier, right? You want to have a rational basis for why it is where it is, right? And so we look to interconnection points and mitigating any potential adverse impacts that there might be on adjacent property owners who, for lack of any better analysis, didn't want it and didn't have any choice about it, right? I mean, we get very concerned with those land uses, emerging land uses, that come to property versus, say, owners building next to when they already, when it's already there, right? So, and that's kind of where we're at. And now, you know, when you start to look at maps for any jurisdiction, when you start to look at overhead maps, you can start to gain some understanding of where it might fit with the least amount of adverse impact. And that's the whole goal.
Understood.
Anything else you'd like to add?
No, no, I'm happy to answer any questions if I may.
So this ordinance does cover private use, so the rooftop and what I call the side yard, and then it goes into the utility scale. So we're, when we're looking at this ordinance, we're looking at all of it. It's not just utility scale, so I just want to make sure everyone understands that. Moving forward is that the will of this body to kind of dissect this, take it back, dissect it, looked at, look at what we did come up in the previous ordinance, like the screening that was addressed. There are some other things that I think some folks had mentioned tonight that we did have in the original that are not in here. So in essence, let's take a month, we go back, kind of delve into it, and do some crosswalks from the previous ordinance that made sense at the time, based on what folks have said here tonight, incorporating that, and then moving forward. And so what we will do is, next month, we will come back with our recommended changes or, you know, what made sense in the last ordinance, what makes sense here, and then we'll continue this drafting, rolling drafting process that we did over a year ago.
And I notice you've been taking a lot of notes on things, so you have an idea of things that you already want to add for next month, right?
But would it be fair to say that after that month, that we have time for review, and then Mr. Homer made another draft, maybe have a scheduled meeting to sit down with the committee, the solar committee, and go over some of this stuff?
Well, we'll have our regular meetings.
Okay, due to the issues that we have until this point, I think it would be fair to the public and the people in the solar committee just to have a meeting to voice their opinions after we have our month, okay? To go through it, and then set up the time and place after next month to make sure that they feel everything's going to be important. I think they need to have that to settle this issue.
And that's what these meetings are for?
Again, I'd like to set up a separate meetings treatment with the solar committee.
We cannot meet as a forum or more. You understand that, right?
It'll be an open meeting, it'll be an open meeting. I'm asking for an open, okay? But I'm asking for involvement of the solar committee that worked on this, please.
And you're saying that they can't make those statements in our, in our regular scheduled meeting?
I'm asking to have a special meeting with the solar committee. That's what I'm asking.
Do you think that one month is enough to revise it to where they're going to be satisfied?
No.
Good start.
Honest answer.
Good start.
I was asking Mr. Homer.
I think the court is all that, and they don't know what it's going to be.
At what point do we come up with the decision where the overlay is going to be so we can share it with them? And at what point do you think we should have a committee meeting with the board, with the commission, saying, okay, here's a map, this is where it's going?
At what point?
And you walk up on this map and write down what you think doesn't look right?
Yeah, so, you know, I think it works well, and I don't know. I mean, I certainly have, I certainly have a projector that I can bring, right? Where, because I think it works well to put that on a screen, and if we need to, we can make revisions to it in real time, both the overlay districts as well as the text of it. And so we can do that in, say, a workshop meeting if you want to notice that up as an open meeting under the Open Meetings Act and have those discussions. I'm not opposed to any of that, so.
How long do you think we need for any meeting to get that out? Next month or maybe another month after that?
No, I would think probably next month, at least with respect to the text. I think the map, the overlay, is going to take some additional time. But at least at that point, you know, we can start to discuss where it should be. Not to mention, you know, I may have, in fact, and I probably will have by that time, some rough calculation of what I think you might want to look at in terms of...
Size and location.
Size and location, yeah.
Just giving you enough time to give us the information we need to share with them.
When you say you have the capacity to do it in real time, would you have a screen available that they could see everything you're doing at the time we do it?
Yeah, so I was just looking around, because I got a projector, which I could project on the wall, except you don't really have much wall space.
No.
We could, I think we have access.
We could put the sheet right there.
Yeah, I mean, whatever works is fine. I've got a projector, so.
If we would have to come up with a screen, but that could be done like at the next meeting with solar?
Yeah, well, and I don't know when the school might be available, because they probably have a screen you could put up behind there. So we can work on those logistics, but yeah. And then, you know, what we do is we redline that. So what happens now, right, based on some of the comments? I'm going to go back through, and from here on out, right, we're redlining so that you can see what it was before, what it, what it is now, right? And so...
You're going to strike cap it?
Yeah, and everybody will have the opportunity to take a look at that.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong, but why do we have to wait a month to get with the group? Because we need to have more information.
Obviously, looking for the...
From what I heard tonight, everybody wants to know where it's going to be.
Well, I don't think...
If you're not going to have everybody...
And they want a lot of setbacks.
But I, we're just going to rehash a dead horse, because they don't like the way it is now, and I understand. So I'm going to make the changes, to let them like make the changes, bring it back, and then set up a meeting at my back.
And then figure out where it's going to go, how big it's going to be. He'll have all that information at that point. And then we can decide and make a rational decision on what the information is.
Well, I'd like to tell you no, but it's going to, right? Because the in-between there, too, we've got, at least for me, spring break is the end of March, first week in April, and I'll be out of town.
Would you have it available for us?
Probably, I mean, I probably could. You know, that's what, three weeks, so, you know.
It'd be nice to have it out there.
I can, I can certainly work on revisions and get you a revised version prior to spring break.
In the March?
In the March.
Just asking you a question again, we are only meeting with the committee, not 75 people from the community.
No, to Megan's point, it's got to be an open meeting.
But this is the Open Meetings Act. If everybody in this room wants to give all their information to the committee, do you trust them to bring it to us?
We haven't done that already.
So do you trust the committee just to be with us?
As radical as our ideas are, you can go through them, but we did present you this.
Well, and I understand, I hear, I heard all the different versions and all the different concerns, and I took that all in. And I'm thinking, is the committee going to have everything that you guys want?
Yeah.
So we can meet with the committee, and so you have a smaller group, it's easier...
There you go.
You have a smaller group, it's easier to work with. We're not, you know, 75 people, you know, sharing their ideas in all at the same time.
So whatever you want to call it, workshop, regular meeting, special meeting, right? They're all subject to the Open Meeting Act, which means all of these folks can attend. They all have the opportunity for public comment if they choose to use it. But it also means that you can designate, say, a portion on the agenda to have a discussion with the committee, so that the committee is not subject to three-minute limitation the way you would be at a normal call to the public.
My hope is he'll clean up a lot of these issues before we have it.
Exactly. That's my point.
That's my hope.
That's why I was giving him the timeline, trying to have him give us a timeline, how long reasonably is going to take him to get to that.
Will it be posted, so we're going to be reviewed for that meeting, committee is here today?
Well, we're going to start reviewing it as a mission right now.
That is what it is.
So he wants to post it to the public, right? It'll be posted to the public, yes.
I guess I have a question for you. This came from your ordinances, it already came out of your office, and it was, it's worked. So from an overlay district, why, why are we stuck on overlay district? Why not use a percentage for what we can do here to regulate a percentage of what property can be used?
So it's an interesting concept. What, what we're trying to do with the overlay is direct where it would be. So most cases, and this started out with like wind energy, right? You go back and you take a look at early provisions of wind and solar, right? They'll say things like, oh, you can put it in the ag district, right? So anywhere in the ag district now becomes open to that use. Well, I haven't looked at your percentage of your ag district, but it's a lot, right?
80%.
80?
Yeah.
Yeah, so in 80% of the township, then you can locate that land use. It doesn't seem to me to be a reasonable or rational analysis to take a look at that land use without also looking at where there would be interconnection, say, with transmission lines. And why subject all of your township to that particular land use when we can focus that land use both on the size of where it is, where it's located, and how to meet that demonstrated need so that we can then say, no, we've done our part, right? That's, that's the point.
My, my thought to that is that we could put an overlay and do like that and offend a lot of farmers who wanted to be involved in it that aren't going to be, be involved in it after we put it over. My thought is, is, to this one, is 25%. So if you allow a farmer to use up to 25% of their land to this use at a maximum, and this one here worked out, as I said, this is flushy, and I'm going back to. 25% is driveways, total fenced-in areas. So you allow them 25%, and then we maintain the setbacks that we want to get it back off the areas. Now, the only thing I've thought of, and my small thinking, is we need to be careful because a lot of the farmers have different identities. You have different LLCs, you have all these different things, and we need to identify if this was the case. But to me, instead of the overlay, and I know that we don't want to throw an overlay out, that was proven the other night in Marion Township, because it just went completely wrong, obviously without verifying with a lot of people, because it, it didn't work out like that in that scenario. But to me, it seems like all the farmers we have, if someone wants to participate, we allow 25%. Now, the next thing is, are the power companies interested? That's probably not enough density for them. But on the other hand, we've allowed a lot of capabilities for them, and we've allowed them to point out, these people are willing to work with you. They're already signed up. Here's 25% here, 25% here, instead of just saying, here's a lump sum, and that's the only winner here.
And, you know, I, look, this is a policy choice, not necessarily a legal one. I mean, legally, right, we can have lot coverage ratios, I'm not concerned about that. Fundamentally, though, you know, in the manner in which you allow the land use, you've opened the entire township to that land use, regardless of the lot coverage ratio. So you'll get 25% here, 25% here, 25% here, and so on. And then a combination or combining those parcels on an acquisition-type basis to say, okay, it's 25% of this one, the one right next to it is 25%, and the one next to that is 25%. So I don't know how that plays out, except that it has the effect of proliferating that land use all over the township.
It'll get larger as it goes along, because people will swap property.
And I can't, and I can't...
It would claim me, here, it's 100 acres.
Well, this is, this, that would have to be, that'd have to be established, what, what the ownership was when this one entered effect.
You've got a lot more policy to cover there.
Well, there would be, there's guaranteed...
Now, I will say, you know, the, the whole nature of zoning is you're not going to make everybody happy. You're just never going to do it.
But it seems like we could make a few more of them, maybe, I don't, how many, how many, probably out here we do, how many landowners we have involved in this total? You guys know that out there?
25.
Why aren't we concerned by 25 farmers and over thousands of residents?
Right? Why can't we have both, the twenty-five percent rule and the solar overlay? Is that a possibility?
It is. What, again, what I would tell you is, that's going to cause you to, if you're concerned about the demonstrated need portion of that, it's gonna cause you to create an overlay district that is larger than you might otherwise be able to have.
So you're opening up a bigger can of worms than you have to.
So we're just talking about shrinking it down to the lowest possible number and locating it in an area that has the least adverse impact.
But we also have to make sure that the area involved wants to be involved.
Well, that's an interesting issue.
That is very interesting.
But it's not required. And I don't say that flippantly. I'm just saying, that's not how zoning works. I didn't write the law.
Same with the trailer part.
I didn't write the law. It's just that way.
You don't think it would look better that we say, here's a piece of property, and these people want to do it, versus what happened the other night, and you say, here's a piece of property, and nobody wants anything to do with it?
Well, see, zoning and land use depends on land uses and not ownership, okay? And that's why, I mean, when you start focusing on owners, you open up a whole nother set of problems.
Discrimination.
Correct.
I'd like to address one of Mike Brown's questions regarding restoration of the land. The contracts that I've seen, they restore to like a four-foot depth. But if there's wiring or conduit down at a deeper depth, how do we prevent that from, or make sure that that is cleaned up if it was to be decommissioned?
So we could put in some, say, at some point, it does not become, it's not reasonable. Now, I don't know, right, because we don't have a site plan, so I have no clue how deep they're going to bury.
Is that addressable in the site plans?
Yeah, I think so. Yeah. I mean, I think you raise a good point about, you know, how it's, or what it's going to be restored as. And I think that's just a difference in the wording between those two sections. Let me find it real quick. Yeah, I'll have to find it, but there's a changing wording that needs to occur, but, you know, it's in there, it's just not in necessarily in that section.
The other issue was on drainage. Can the township enforce drainage, or is that strictly a drain commission issue?
Well, it's a drain commission issue, except that we've included a provision that requires them to make sure that the drain tile remains intact. So, but it is a drain commission issue, but there are things that you can require in terms of stormwater and soil and sedimentation erosion issues that you would have authority over on site plan review.
Okay. And was it possible for you to address the storage issue of the damage or defect panels on site? Is there some way, caveat, that you could address that?
Yeah, and I think, let me look. Yeah, that's not, that's not an issue. I mean, to the extent that, to the extent that it's not in there, it's easy enough to put it in.
That's all I'm getting.
Well, I thought in the previous one too, we'd said no battery storage.
I saw a sentence in there on that. It said, talk about batteries, like, batteries if needed, and I think that whole sentence should be struck.
Yeah, we don't want.
Yeah, we said all along, we didn't want that.
No, no, I'm just saying, I thought I'd forget where it is.
That was in the last one. No, I read it in this one. It's in the last sentence.
Well, we had stricter language in the last one.
I'm not saying.
No, I'm just saying, but I don't know. We said it was in the last one. We had stricter language. We said no batteries here.
Because we had longer.
Each thirteen.
If batteries.
If batteries are used as part of the ground model solar energy system, they must be placed in a secured container or enclosure.
Yeah, and we said no.
And we've, we've.
We just said no.
In the original version.
But that's in the middle?
Correct.
So we need to get that struck.
I just wanna strike that whole sentence.
But add.
But add.
Yeah, but add.
That's fine.
But isn't that a big follow-up? I mean, they come back with like.
Or just no batteries, no batteries or battery storage.
Oh, Chiawassee up there, I mean, that's what they came back with, the one, I put enough water, but we put with batteries.
Yeah.
And they must have allowed it, but we were clear in the original version, no batteries.
Because the technology is going that way.
Yes.
It wasn't originally, but now the technology is on the.
And we wanted to. We wanted to get in front of it before it was gonna be required.
Because we asked those guys up there specifically, what are you gonna do when batteries come in? And one guy said, we'll just have to fill the storage facility, put them in.
Does that include the prohibition for batteries on private systems?
No.
Yeah. Well, we shouldn't specifically say.
In the original, from a thousand to two fifty, was to include people who had.
Side yards.
Side yards, or ones in their backyard or in your side yard. So because it would be impossible if you had a small lot, they have two hundred and fifty, or a thousand-foot setback if your property's only eight hundred feet wide.
Right.
So they would.
It's a small, medium, and large system.
Yeah, that's exactly. Getting one that you could wall mount, you could put them on your garage or roof. But if you wanted to have one in your backyard, the setback would be less so that you could accommodate that service.
So we didn't want to designate three different systems, small, medium, and large, with different setbacks. Or no setbacks at all, just small.
We could do that.
Large setbacks or large system.
That's where that two fifty or is being.
Is there a standard that has worked for the tree planting and stuff been brought up compared with the hundred foot?
Yeah, I don't know. I'll have to go back and take a look. I mean, every community wants something a little different.
So we were clear that we wanted like the double, triple row. We also wanted it to be something that, like, the deer wouldn't eat, like the upper be.
Or something that would survive.
Survive, and then if it went, if it died or whatever, they're gonna have to. Because to the point, in Chiawassee County, they planted like these trees that are all like wilted and stuff like that, and there's no provision, and there's no requirement to have them replace it. And we wanted to.
Maintenance provision.
Make sure that we.
We had a maintenance provision in the original draft.
Yes.
And we have it so that you couldn't see through it.
Right.
Correct.
You could stagger a tree every five feet, every six feet.
Was it a burr?
No, it wasn't a burr.
What's that?
What's the plan to get them to come back and plant new trees?
Oh, you put a provision in there, and then they're responsible for maintenance, saying that they would find if they didn't.
Marion has Norway spruce twelve feet apart.
Yeah, okay.
They're set there, or they're spreading.
Norway spruces are good. Blue spruces are having a hard time right now.
They have some other.
They're having a disease right now, so. There's other kinds of pine.
So, Michael, I know you're taking notes. Did you have anything else? So we individually will go back, I would pull out the old, last version that we had because there was tight language, and then start making notes. Michael has captured some of the public, some of our notes, and we will, we will meet back there on April tenth, but.
Michael have a copy of our lead us to drinking schedule? We are getting ready to.
Do you have a copy of that? I can send it to you.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Could I, Megan, my, my, sorry. What I handed you is about twelve hours of work of what you're describing. I literally did all of that, and I'm not saying I'm right, I'm not saying a hundred percent, but I sat with the community in these meetings, and I listened to what they said, and I worked hours and hours and hours with these other folks. I pulled from his ordinances, and maybe he'll look at some of them and go, crap, I had that in there? I don't really want that anymore. That's fine. But what I gave you is hours of what you're looking for. I have them highlighted in those ordinances. I have referenced everything, so I beg you to read them, please. If you're bucking up way back and starting from where you were and down the trail, I just handed you breadcrumbs, so please read them.
Any other discussion?
Could we get Sarah to send that to Michael, so she can have a copy of that, whatever Sarah came up with.
I have a copy, I can.
Thank you. Please do that.
I will do that.
Thanks.
Do you wanna offer your land as tribute for the overlay? Yeah.
I'd like to move on.
Thought maybe you'd wanna offer it as tribute. Okay, new business, the shipping containers area.
Bring the important tension, I've had four requests, and I threw one together.
I can, I can.
Three addition, or two addition, or eight parents, or seven. And we could build a house out of shipping containers.
They do do it.
I know they do. That's why I bring you the attention. We'd have nothing, so.
What about the building?
That I don't know. They, this is. They did say, one guy for an addition, and you needed a foundation for.
That's gonna be a building. And to talk of them all.
Just once.
Did they give you a chance?
Actually, because they're even guided down, they did have. They did land should. About containers. I think it would be great detail.
So we need to get it out.
Yeah.
So what have you, I'm sorry.
That was the addition, one of the addition.
What did, so you said one wants to build a house out of shipping containers, and then one wants to use as an addition, and what else?
Two, one addition, and one eight parents for the bedroom, bathroom, and a forty feet.
So an ADU.
They actually fabricate them, all ready to go.
Yes, they're brain nails and.
The way.
Does the company have anything at all?
Do you think it's company?
Yeah, I'm sorry, you had a question.
I did, but the concern you're talking about is just for building purposes, right, not storage purposes.
Storage purposes is a few around.
Right, but that's not.
Well, see, everything you, everything you brought up should be brought, you put into the ordinance. Is it gonna be brand-new? Is it gonna be something that's been sitting on a shipping container ship that's all rusted out and ugly? Is it gonna be a brand-new thing? We can control the color, patience, we can do all that stuff in an ordinance.
We need to, because there's ads out there. I've seen that they're selling them like crazy, like, hey, here you go.
They're selling all the old ones, trying to get rid of them so they can raise money. So they only connect so many trips from China or Pakistan. Controls what they look like. You don't have a bunch of them. You're stacked up, so you need solid.
Well, I think to back up, are you even allowing them as houses or ADUs or whatever, or do you come up with like, no?
I just come up with a no ordinance that says you can't have them.
Right, that's what I'm.
Can it be a lot of that?
No, you don't think so? Well, then we'll have an ordinance that says that you have to do this, 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 and this. And it has to be brand-new, you can't have ADUs. And if you are, you're gonna have to paint it. It's gonna be the color of your house.
And what do you base it on?
Probably by aesthetics. Your neighbors.
Are you referencing anything for this?
Referencing? No, I'm not referencing.
No, we're just not learning about it, so now we're saying the research is.
Just learning about it.
I think they're gonna be researching. No, I know, you're playing to your face. I got.
We're putting solar.
Well, we're trying to not put solar, so. But, so it's just a matter of getting lawyers involved, and also we have some information on that.
Hearing none. According to the amended agenda at the top of the hour, our second call to the public.
Somebody bring up shipping containers, please.
So another item, because I thought I was running out of three minutes, and I don't care, do this again. Uh, inverter coverage.
I'm sorry, repeat your name real quick.
Mike Brown.
Thank you.
I'd like to see some kind of screen with shrubbery or something around these inverters. And I'd also like to not see them within a hundred feet of the road like they are up in land. Where they're right on the top of the road, and you want to walk down your road, and you just hear these things blasting here in the middle of the day. And they are close, so it'd be great if there was some kind of coverage on them and stuff like that around the inverters.
Coverage or maybe even a setback on your setback far enough away to be able to hear or see them?
Correct. So that building, case them in some natural spot.
Well, you can put them in like a dumpster, like a dumpster surround.
Shipping container. You ship them back to China.
You have a new shipping container.
I'm sorry.
Because the other ones are awesome.
I have an only one. Oh, now we're not waiting for it.
All right, so.
Then there was a motion made earlier by Mr. Bush, about meeting with the solar committee. And it was kind of approved, and Mr. Homier kind of laid out a plan of being able to do this and stuff. And I'd like to see that happen and not cut them at three minutes like the rest of us would be. I know that you have to have this in an open meeting, but I would like to see the committee be able to speak, like I said, longer than three minutes, and have a drift back and forth with the community, because, yes, they do represent us. And we have all put input into what they have submitted to you. So there was a motion made earlier, it was number second, it just kinda got flattened here. So I hope that that is resolved.
Hello, gentlemen. I'm glad, Marion Township. Contrary to Mr. Homier, there are no requirements or mandates, and so if you guys decide to do this solar, it's strictly voluntary. You are bringing this into your community at your own free will, just for future reference in case this all does blow up in the faces of the people who are being deceived. Mr. Homier is falsely representing what a demonstrated need is. He claims your demonstrated need is acreage to residence. Now, this is not, this is, does not match what the Michigan Supreme Court has ruled is what a demonstrated need is. So I would suggest that you guys hire an attorney who's gonna be honest with you about a demonstrated need, because this will come back. And then Mr. Homier mentioned about drafting an ordinance that prohibits, that's not, does not permit solar farms. Okay, well, why would you draft an ordinance that does not permit solar farms? That's, that's a kind of a strange statement. But anyways, the bottom line is, is if you do not adopt any ordinance for solar farming, there's nothing coming back onto you. The problem I see with it is you're opening the door to lawsuits. Because once you open the door and let one solar area be opened up, you're going to have other people come in and file lawsuits for what they want, regardless of your ordinance. That's where your lawsuits are gonna come in. Your lawsuits are not gonna come in because you don't have an ordinance. Because this, remember, this is a voluntary thing. The state had a goal for thirty-five percent. Well, you're not obligated to meet the state's goal. It's a stupid law. It's not even a law. Like, what kind of a law is that? We have a goal, and you. We have a goal and you should help us. Well, that was put out to the utility companies in that law. That was never an obligation of a township or a city. Because the state cannot mandate a township do something for them. That's just out of constitution. So anyways, it's all voluntary, no one's being forced to do anything. You are doing this at your own will. This is went down the road when Mr. Homier is exposed to what he's falsely representing as a demonstrated need. Have a good night.
I'd like to hear your comments, please.
I stuck in that motion.
Have you read this Supreme Court ruling and all the things that you're speaking? I have never heard of it.
I've been representing municipalities for 20, nearly 25 years.
Right.
Specifically on land use and zoning issues. So the legislature has specifically delegated the authority to townships. Without that delegation, you don't have zoning authority, period. So when you say things like the state can't tell you what to do, nonsense. Okay, so other than the fact that, you know, look, I'm not, I'm not telling you that there is or is not a demonstrated need. We don't learn that until some judge somewhere tells you, right? But the problem with that is we, we mitigate against risk. That's what we do. That's what I'm in the business of doing. So it's the what-if scenario and I'll run a thousand of those through either my department, my, I, I'm the chair of our municipal group, right? And so I've got 10 lawyers that work in just representing municipal clients. And so we sit down once a month and talk about all of these issues, where it's going, where it's been, what can we do to prevent our clients from being sued? The fact of the matter is zoning is permissive, right? And that means that if you don't allow it, by its very nature, it is prohibited. Okay, and then you've got the Zoning Enabling Act saying you cannot prohibit a lawful land use where there's a demonstrated need. Well, that's a risk then. Now, I'm fine if you don't want to adopt any ordinance and leave it to chance or defense.
So it goes back to where you explained to George about the high risk and the low risk.
Well, so what happens is, right, somebody comes in with an application. This goes for all kinds of land uses. You look through your zoning ordinance, I guarantee you, you have not addressed every single land use that you could possibly dream of. We didn't know that marijuana was going to become a land use, right? But it is. So if you don't provide for it, that means by its nature, you've excluded that. So if you've excluded it, then it ratchets up that risk, okay? Rather than dealing with that land use, not only that land use, but others. I'll give you another example. You come in with, say, wind energy, like for turbines, right? Now, that's a lawful land use, we can all agree on that. It's not unlawful. But it means then that you have to classify that land use if you haven't done it. And so when there's a provision likely in your zoning ordinance that allows some basis then to classify these new land uses that you haven't even thought of yet. That's the very nature of zoning. That's why you can amend it. That's why amendments are always occurring. So, but, you know, look, I, I put my record up against anybody's.
I know we're focused on solar. When can we see the wind ordinance? And what, what would be helpful to hear from this body? For example, I do not want wind. So do we have the most restrictive, where we don't get sued, but we have the most restrictive language that basically prohibits wind? And I'm not speaking for the rest of the group, but.
Yeah, I mean, I've, I've got, I've got some drafts that I can give you.
Does it include an overlay district?
Uh, no. Because the nature, the nature, the nature of wind is a little different, right? It's not.
I'm just kind of, I gotta ask.
Yeah.
You beat me to it.
I'm sorry, we kept you waiting.
My name's Tom Parker, I live in 7,000 in the road. And, um, the last comment that was just made about I don't want to have you do this, just for that group up there, it's health, safety and welfare and you check your opinions at the door. I heard a comment. I heard a comment from one of the planning commission members to another one about you're playing to your base. I'm not going to say any names.
It was me, I sent it to George.
Totally unprofessional. My thought is that we're citizens of Conway Township. We all should be your base and, and we all should be on the same page. And disappointed to hear that kind of comment up there and unnecessary. That's all I want to say.
Hi, this is Megan, again. I just want to say, I know you guys talk a lot about putting a few people in charge of all of our opinions and I, I trust a lot of what people are saying up here, but I, I, I'm a taxpayer. I pay for my home in this county. I vote, I'm a part of my, you know, I do my due diligence and I want to have my own say. I don't want you to exclude me from an open meeting so that I can do that.
But we're not doing that. We're not doing that.
So I just want, I, I don't want you to keep pushing on that, that this advisory committee, you know, is going to do all the speaking for individuals.
No, 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 we'll just have a dedicated time in that meeting.
To talk to that.
To talk to them specifically. You still have the right to call the public.
Thank you.
So Steve Smith, yeah, Rob Rowe. So this has been a long call for all of us. I have attended next week since October, since I got involved in this. I'm sure there's many people like this. I went to the Livingston County Planning Commission, I think, last month for the first time. And I liked how they handled it. They had a general call to the public, but they also asked for each of their line items, they asked, specifically asked, is there any public comment on this? So it's hard for us sometimes to do, express our opinion in the call to the public because we don't, haven't heard what you have said. You all made some good comments tonight. You know, and I hate just saying something without having permission to say it at that time. So I suggest later on, when we're reviewing this in detail with the solar advisory committee, that we go through it line by line and we ask for, we have the solar advisories committee comment on that and we also ask for public comment on this, on a line by, line by line basis. I think that's what we're after eventually. It doesn't have to be next month, but eventually before this is adopted, we should go through it line by line. If you remember, the first time I spoke, I said the, the public is hurt and angry. Well, I don't want to be angry if anybody is, it's so exhausting to be angry at somebody. I don't want to be larger heads with anybody. We just want to work with you. I, I like all your comments tonight. I think we can do a good job on this. Thank you.
Karen Porter. Nice and quick comment. Megan, because you so graciously fussed up to that comment a second ago. I think it should be noted that we've had a really bumpy road, all of us. This whole solar road has been, like some of the roads in this township.
It's a whole different topic.
I think that we're all trying to get to the same goal and some attitudes need to be checked. And I will admit that goes on both sides of the street. So I really would appreciate if we can put some indifferences aside and do what we all need to do for the community and get through this ordinance quickly. There's no reason for this to drag out, so we really would like to work with you.
Mary from Tull again. And I'm getting more comfortable, I should be able to talk. So anyway, thank you for your comments. I originally spoke from the first responders past nobody, Washington County Dispatch, one time ago. And I had since that time mentioned my concerns, which you did put more concisely around that. But I did see in one of the other township's provisions or proposals that the power company offered to provide training for the first responders and firefighters. And I thought it was a joke, so just be really careful about that when reading that stuff. Also, Marion Township, because we just had our three minutes, but I wanted to throw this out, out there. Marion, the other night, I mentioned the migration path, that waterfall take in use. And it was sort of like pooh-poohing a little bit. I got the impression it was not something I probably was appreciative to say. But since you don't have your overlay yet, if you have two areas of concern and one has more wetlands versus the other, I would urge you to go away from the wetlands. I had spoken briefly of one of the meetings around Christmas and did more research since then. I have a synopsis here put together from articles by Dale James, PhDs with DU, Ducks Unlimited. He's the conservation planning manager. Dale Humbert wrote a DU article, Ducks in the Dark. And the Audubon Society also is recognizing lake effect. These big expansive solar panel portable things look like lakes at night, look like water to migrating fowl. And especially the diving ducks and the dancers, the, or there's a bunch of them also at times. But we have a lot of these birds coming through of the four main migration paths. Michigan, Minnesota, we are larger. We've got 40 to 50% of the ducks and, if I get this right, 30 to 40% of Canada geese. And at night is when they are the busiest, migrating, feeding, landing. And especially, again, the diving ducks. In fact, I'll just throw this out there because there's a lot of them up by the straits right now. Campus ducks and the dancers, eaters, redheads, scooters, buffalo heads. These types of ducks are a little different. They need water to land, to feed and to take off. And this is truly happening in various places. When they land, they get made, if not killed, they cannot fly out of situations. And the numbers were astounding to me. And the wind thing was briefly mentioned. Wind turbines, there's a good study by Joel Merriman, the American Bird Conservancy. And we are over the millions of birds being killed by stuff that is out there and is the biggest stuff. Thank you, Megan.
Doug Cho, 97, 98, March Road. I had a couple of questions for our attorney, actually. Do you have any idea what kind of demand the utilities requesting of us for like load?
No.
Do you have that information?
No, only because there hasn't, to my knowledge, been even an application submitted. So it's hard for me to know what is lurking out there.
Okay, do we have any obligation that like satisfy what they're requesting of us as a township?
No.
Okay. I can hear a little bit later, can you define what an overlay district is?
Yeah, an overlay district is sort of, if you think of this, your zoning map as an underlying zoning district, right? So you'll have agricultural uses and in the zoning ordinance, like any zoning ordinance, it defines what is permitted, right? Either by right or by special use permit, okay? So you have the ag district. On top of that then, you have a smaller area. In that smaller area, you can do everything the zoning ordinance says you can do in that district plus, at least in this instance, that one additional thing. That one additional thing would be solar land use for just that defined area within that zoning district. So for instance, if you were to amend your zoning ordinance to say, well, you could have a solar farm anywhere in the ag district. Now you've taken all of the ag property in the township and said, okay, you can do it anywhere where there's. This is limited to a confined area and operates sort of as a, almost as its own zoning district, but it's not really, it's just on top of the underlying district. Does that make sense?
And then all the criteria has to be met?
Correct.
For that to actually put in place?
Yeah, so then there, on top of that, then there are special land use permit standards for that land use within that overlay district.
Gotcha.
Doug, real quick, can you repeat your first question that you asked?
I asked what demand, load demand the utilities requesting of the township?
So you're talking kilowatts, megawatts?
High megawatts, I would imagine. I do think the definitive language is very important so that it's not manipulated by the utilities. And that's all I have.
Hello, Kathy Janades, Marion Township.
I'm sorry, can I repeat your name real quick?
Kathy Janades, Marion Township.
Okay, go ahead and sign in.
Just two quick points. What was said earlier about the screening of the buffering? Marion Township did rewrite theirs quite tighter and it would be a really good thing to look at. And they also do address the inverters directly, so I might want to take a look at that. The other thing that the residents had requested was brought into our ordinance is a really good consideration as far as, so if a landowner decides to go with solar, they should be equally responsible for any damages. So I'd like to read you two points. It read it to our ordinance. The utility's solar energy facility owner, operator and property owner shall be responsible jointly and severally for mitigating erosion, flooding and other environmental impacts resulting from the solar energy facility. The utility's solar energy facility owner, operator and property owners shall be responsible jointly and severally for making repairs to any public roads, drains and infrastructure damaged by the construction and used of or damage to the utility solar facility. So it's just the point that if somebody chooses to lease their land, they should also be responsible for any damages that come to the, you know, from a fire, from flooding, from, you know, toxins coming into the ground. They should also be responsible for their choices as far as the solar.
Yeah, in some of our drafts, we have some liability as well for the owner. Mostly when it comes to decommission. I'll look at, say, damage to roads, which is a, it's a dicey issue to begin with because these are county roads, right? Township doesn't have jurisdiction over the roads themselves. I mean, they have concurrent jurisdiction, but it's limited. It's not like, um, the township doesn't own any of the roads. So those were transferred to the road commission in 1951, so. But we can, we can put some provisions in there that would hold the owner responsible for certain aspects of it as well.
In addition to erosion, flooding.
Yeah, I thought that erosion. Those are the two biggest things.
In addition to the contractual language between the landowner and the provider or developer.
Well, the, the only problem with that is I don't, in most cases, you don't have that contract, right?
Understood, but would there be a conflict between the ordinance requirements?
No, no, I don't think so, because we have, the township has control over the land use aspect. Regardless of any private contractual issues.
Can I bring up one other one and this, it might be far past? The guarantee that one particular person locally here trying to push. The guarantee that one particular person locally here trying to push this, the guarantee in how much the income is going to, the base, tax base that's going to be increased. And you just smiled. Here's my take on what...
It'll always be a percentage of those criteria.
Until our governor approves it a crop, it a agricultural crop.
We can hear her too.
Go ahead with your question.
How do you put a hundred percent upfront, like the one gentleman said, a hundred percent upfront, right?
That's, that's different.
So every, every...
The tax base that increases. So they keep selling it on, and I spoke to one of the, one of the land people involved in it, and that's what they sell it on. Aren't you, wouldn't you be excited about the tax revenue that this would bring to our schools and all of our things? So if this, if this, that's right, it's not guaranteed. Is there a way to put in there that it's a guarantee beyond if they converted it to an agricultural crop?
You could not do that as a condition of approval. Because it, I mean, that's kind of what bankrupts these things after the fact. One particular that they keep bringing up is down by Kelmazoo and Battle Creek. They put up a new sports facility, which is great for all the kids. And they're basing it off of the tax increase down in that area that this was based on. But if it turns back to agricultural crop, who finishes paying for the buildings? So this, this was an issue a lot with wind projects. And so what would happen, and you'll see the same thing happen with solar. So what would happen is they would come in and they would say, "Okay, we're going to contribute thirty-five million dollars, say, over ten years in additional taxes." You could pave the roads, schools. The minute that project's done, they'll be down at the Michigan Tax Tribunal appealing evaluation. And that's what happened in the thumb area. So then those jurisdictions, those taxing jurisdictions, taking that money to have revenue, right? They spend it because tax appeals take multi-years to finish. And then unfortunately, there were some entities that won that, which meant those schools now have to pay back that money and they don't have to.
Yeah.
And so what we did was, we would say, not as a condition of approval, but we would say, "Well, if, if that is what you are telling the municipalities, then you can offer that guarantee." Oh, no, no, we can't do that.
Right, that's what I'm saying. We put that in there that this is...
You can't because that's a condition of approval. Because you can't make it a condition of approval. That doesn't mean that they can't agree to it separately.
And they're selling it on that to everybody out there, you know, that's...
Well, if they're trying to sell it that way, then you can ask the, you can ask the questions straight up. Will you guarantee it? Will you put it in writing that you're going to guarantee that money is not going to leave just on...
They've been to the business district and everything in town and selling it on that basis, the tax base, that it's the revenue that it's going to bring to the library, the school.
Yeah, I wouldn't even ask the question. Because when you ask the question then, and the answer is no, and for whatever reason, let's suppose you deny it, what do you think they're going to use as a basis?
They're going to use that as their ruling.
They're going to say they denied it because we wouldn't guarantee the tax revenue portion. So we don't, we don't ask. You certainly can offer a conditional rezoning, right? So a developer can offer a conditional rezoning and offer terms of that rezoning, okay? It's codified under the zoning enabling it. What that means is that somebody can offer that and you could accept it and that would be fine. But you can't require it as a condition of approval.
But isn't the tax revenue based on a depreciation scale over a ten year period?
Yeah, but those schedules are set up by treasury, right? And so what you'll get then is a challenge to those schedules. And...
Regardless, they drop every year based on depreciation, right?
The tax that we get off of the, that's what I'm saying, the salary. It depreciates in ten years and it stays level for the rest of the project.
So they argue the depreciation rate very quick.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, the minute it's done, that's where they go.
Yep.
Any other call to the public?
We got one now. He was thinking about something he could tell.
Do you think they'll Matthew gas them like the residential ones?
I'm sorry?
Do you think they'll Matthew gas the commercial grade ones like they did residential? Because everyone on residential is tax exempt.
Very likely.
Oh, the, the private?
Yeah, all the private ones are...
I don't think so. You know, the, I can't remember.
And they did generators this year too.
Yeah, they did generators. But it was either last year or the year before where the governor had before her a bill that would have changed the way they were taxed based upon the electricity produced. And she vetoed that, which surprised me.
That was the tax in lieu of...
Right. And so I don't know where it's going to go from here. You know, obviously, her party controls all of the levers right now, so...
And that also changed the way the assessors assess the property also.
Yeah.
So if you have a in-home or a whole house generator on your property, it gets assessed differently, you know, because of that.
Right.
Because they got vetoed.
Right.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
No problem. My name's Amy Weiss. I live on Silver Road. Speaking to the tax, the tax revenue, someone in a previous meeting broke down a ton of numbers on what the tax revenue of the facility would be over thirty years. Oh, you're wrong. Yes. And it was not far off from the tax revenue generated by this project. Just wanted to make a comment on that. I don't speak for everyone, but as far as like someone having six solar panels on their property, I'd be a lot less offended having that like fifty feet off my property line as comparison to three or four sides of my house. And the final thing, the shipping container thing. Didn't forget about you. Once again, I'm not speaking for everybody, but you know, there's a lot of houses around here with a lot of crap in their yard, whatever it is what it is, but you know...
There are ordinances for all that.
As long as they didn't look like complete crap, you know, I wouldn't be super concerned about it.
They do look kind of cool if done right.
If done right.
Like stamped with stuff.
You know, in comparison to someone's store, they did rusty ones on the property.
Right.
Use a tentacle. That's why I believe in Morgan, yes, we can be a holding. Yeah, Ray Dorton didn't do something. That's all I got to say.
Steve Weiss, Silver Road. I did a little field trip that we took. We did go by a site in Lennon, or not Lennon, I'm sorry, Grunner. And if this zoning is done properly for this solar nightmare, I can tell you up there, that installation, their setbacks were so far back from people's properties. The inverters were placed in the middle of the project so as the noise, keep the noise from resonating. And if you drove all the way around that project, you wouldn't even know it's there unless you lived there when the construction was going on. But I mean, it was well done with the screening and everything.
Are you talking Richardson Road?
Yeah.
Just north of the golf course, or south of the golf course.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, I have a friend who, I work with that, this friend, his best friend that he farmed with for years, owned that property.
So I guess my, my point being, if we can get this done and get it done right between the attorney, the planning commission, the Solar Advisory Commission, I'm pretty sure we can make this work and it's not going to affect people's property values, which is, I think, everybody in this room's major concern given. That's all I got.
Do you know the townships on the front of what's when we look up yours?
Caladonia. I have it.
Oh, is it Caladonia?
Good. It's Richardson and Lyon, I believe. It's Caladonia Township. And since that solar facility was approved...
Wait, say your name.
Richard Allen.
All right, thank you.
Since that was approved, I was actually at the meeting where they hardened the solar ordinance. And now, I, how, how big is that site? It was two hundred and fifty acres or something like that? Okay, okay. So it's a lot smaller than the site on M thirteen. But even since then, none of the neighbors were notified that even that one went in, in the, in the better constructed one. And I happened to talk to somebody there. I pulled up in the access road there because I took some pictures too. I went out there and the fabric's fallen off the fence, the trees are all dying. So I mean, it's not utopia. We're not going to tell you this. But since then, Caladonia Township has hardened our ordinance. And now it's can be over a hundred and twenty-five acres, can be within a mile and a half of each other, and can only be used on prime, on non-prime farmland. It is determined by the USDA. So, and that is Caladonia Township. Well, to add on to what you just said, the person that I was discussing that owned that property, when the company first came to them and said they wanted to use their, his prime property, he said he refused and they moved out. Instantly, as soon as he said, "Nope." He said, "I'll give you two hundred and fifty acres right here that I don't farm. You can." And they said, "No," because it didn't fit thirty. So just got to take that into consideration also. I think the overlay district will play right into our hands then.
Oh, I was like, "All right."
Lots of shipping to the... Lots of playoffs.
This is not exciting for me. The other one is he's involved.
Pacific and Walton.
Yes. And the other problem...
Since you want a young guy to come up. My name is Paul Funk and I live in Osceola. I'll fill this out in a second. I do wear a few hats in this county that's not important. I'm a resident as well and I have concerns. I appreciate the opportunity to give you a couple of minutes. Because I wear a lot of hats in this county doing various things, I've been tracking this whole issue across from one corner to the next. I also have twenty-five years of planning experience from other communities and counties. But it's not about me. It's about you and your residents. As elected or appointed officials, we, we take oaths to preserve and enhance the health, safety, and welfare of our people. Planning is only meant to make our lives better, our facilities, our communities, our opportunities for our children, and so forth. You have the prerogative in your ordinance development to include things that make it more healthy, more safe, and more progressive in a, in a positive way for our people. For example, you can require, I know you said, sir, that the roads around here are all county roads. I know that. I know that real well. But you can require a road study for any project, you can also require a drain assessment. You can also toughen your ordinance and provide, and this is being talked about in other areas of the county now, requiring perimeter water runoff capture and filtration to keep any risk of sediments, whether they come from broken panels, hailstorms, wind damage, vandalism, whatever, from hitting the ground and running out into what is our water table and therefore our wells and everything else. You can put that in. You can also require that in your setbacks, that there is the greenery for sure, but you can also require that the filtrations are in those bellwells. So it's no additional land purchase or, or land lease for the utility companies. But it does take a strong position for you as a community to be able to say to your residents, "Hey, we did in this overlay zone, wherever it ends up being, or whether it's, as the gentleman said, here, a percentage of certain areas, put controls in it that's going to preserve the water now, but also keep that runoff and those potentially dangerous chemicals from ruining that land for twenty, thirty years from now when my grandchildren want to farm," or whatever. And then the other element I would, the gentleman that talked about fire and fire controls, and I don't like time, it's probably up. He's not wrong. There's been a lot of studies and I fought a battle thirty years ago about an incinerator going in Auburn Hills that was going to have all the fallout in Rochester and Rochester Hills over in Oakland County. We showed that there was no way for the first responders to be able to handle what could happen out of that. So toughen your ordinance, put in the requirements for cash, bond, money for training, and repeated training every year, every two years, every three years to make sure that the local fire authority has the ability to handle this. Because remember, they're not always going to put these things out with water, which hits the panel, hits the ground, hits in my well. They're going to have to put them out with chemicals. Boom. And those chemicals are also bad. So with that, remember, the health, safety, and welfare of people is what is at stake.
Where you been last six months?
Well, some of the folks go on my... There's a lot of townships out there.
Any other public comment?
About the young man.
All right. I need a motion to adjourn the meeting at nine oh seven. Second?
I will say.
Any discussion? All those in favor, let me just repeat. It's Dave Witt, motion to adjourn at seven oh, or nine oh seven. Support, Sean Morrison. Any discussion? All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.